Number twelve to order at six thirty. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I please have a roll call?
Supervisor Riley.
Present.
Clerk Kenzoldy.
Present.
Treasurer Epikin.
Present.
Trustee Erda Thompson.
Present.
Trustee Jafford.
Present.
Trustee Raybeck. Trustee Mills.
Present.
Madam Supervisor, you have six members present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, and I'm going to go ahead. Before I ask for an approval of the agenda, we do have a couple of changes. So we're going to be adding nine point thirteen, which is something you have at your seats. It's to authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign an agreement with DTE Energy Company for the relocation of electronic services in the Public Safety Facility Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-six cents, subject to township attorney approval. And then we'll be pulling item nine point nine. And may I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, agenda is approved as amended. I will go ahead and call for public comment one. Any person may come forward at this time to address the board. Anyone who wishes to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? All right, but welcome to everyone. All right, so we will go on to a, the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion for four point one?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Support.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. May I have a motion for four point two, please?
Madam Chair, I motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those minutes are approved as well. We do not have any public hearing, presentations, or proclamations, no communications. They have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda seven point one through seven point eleven.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to eight point one. In your packet is the Carpenter Road Walking Safety Audit Feedback. May I have a motion to file and receive?
Madam Chair, I move to file and receive the Carpenter Road Walking Safety Audit Feedback.
Second.
Okay, just a, just a little update on this. You know, we, we took time to walk the corridor on Carpenter Road. I think we talked about this before. That's a corridor where we've lost a couple of lives this year, and over the years, it's been a safety issue. We did have an independent safety audit done, and those results are going to be forthcoming. But this is the actual residents and organizations and our staff, led by Deputy Almecker and the community development team, as we, on a rainy day, went out there and walked it, and it was, it was quite eye-opening, and the report shows you a lot of detail within it. And then Peoples Express was kind enough to help us drive, drive us back to the Montebell Park. So we started at Montebell Park, went up Ellsworth, and went down to the Packard Road intersection there, and walked as a group and really, and talked through the issues of what other people would be challenged with walking in that corridor. So if you have any questions on that study, let us know. But if Ray's good with it, we'll go ahead and ask for, or say, all in favor of filing and receive it? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll go ahead and file and receive. All right, moving on to eight point two, we have an update?
Yes, we had an election, of course, on November fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and it was the, the special proposal for Washtenaw Intermediate School District. We did have about six thousand two hundred sixty-eight ballots that were cast. By all accounts, it was a very slow election. We had about twenty-one percent voter turnout. It was slightly higher than the last millage and proposals in May, which was DPS and Parks. So there is that. And the numbers that I have presented are just numbers to show people how many people registered in each precinct, who voted absentee, who voted in person, and where the yes-no votes, you know, turned out. I did put a copy of the precinct map, it's very tiny, on this little sheet, and only because we recently changed our precinct districts. So it's, you know, what we called six and ten, or, you know, eight and nine now. So it is somewhat confusing, but if you want to see what the precincts are, you can go onto the website on the clerk's page, and you can get our precinct map and blow it up and see, see how it all turned out. You can also get these election results on the Washtenaw County Election Results website. This, this is where we pull our numbers from. They are unofficial results, but they were probably certified by now. But at the time that I prepared it, it was still unofficial. And the proposal passed. Washtenaw County had sixty-five thousand ballots cast, and they had a twenty-two percent voter turnout overall for the whole county, which is higher than Pittsfield. So I would ask that my Pittsfield people go out and vote. Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion to receive and file.
Madam Chair, I move to receive and file the November fourth, two thousand twenty-five special election update.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going to go ahead and file that. Moving on to new business, nine point one, please.
Madam Chair, I move to receive and file the second quarter, two thousand twenty-five cash balance report.
Second.
Okay, do you want to give us any updates on that, Treasurer Epikin?
It's, so on, it's page fifty-six of your board packet is our quarterly investment report. Two thousand twenty-five summer tax season began in July and proceeded in accordance with statutory deadlines. Disbursements from winter two thousand twenty-four collections have been fully completed. allocations were made to the general fund, public safety, parks and recreation, and other voter-approved millages. As for an investment outlook for now, most of our seeders are matured in May, and were reinvested about, across about thirteen, twenty-six, and fifty-two week terms. So as we continue to monitor Federal Reserve policy and market rates closely, that's what's going to guide us on future investments. So strategy remains the same, safety, liquidity, yield. Thank you.
All right. All in favor of filing and receiving? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those are filed and received. Thank you. May I please have a motion for nine point two?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Pittsfield Charter Township Board of Trustees meeting schedule for the, for two thousand twenty-six.
I appreciate the vigor. There you go. All right, any discussion on this? I think that the dates were kind of edited out, so. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the schedule, yes.
I would just mention that there, there is a meeting, or perhaps two on the schedule, that does not occur here. Just so you know, it does occur at our community center on seven oh one, West Ellsworth. But it is noted on the schedule. I just wanted to.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll be having some work here at the building, so we'll be having some meetings offsite, so. Thank you. All right, may I have a motion for nine point three?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt a resolution for reappointments to township boards, committees, and commissions, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, can I ask for a roll call on this one?
Supervisor Riley.
Yes.
Clerk Kenzoldy.
Yes.
Treasurer Epikin.
Yes.
Trustee Erda Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Jafford.
Yes.
Trustee Mills.
Yes.
All right, resolution has passed. Now, before I ask for a motion for nine point four, I just want to indicate that there was a typo on that resolution, or that, the actual agreement, and that's at your desk. It's a small typo, so I just want to make sure everybody, let's see that, it's an Exhibit A. There was just a title, typo on there, so. If I could have a motion for nine point four, please?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to enter into a two-year agreement with the Peoples Express for demand response, public transportation service, at annual cost not to exceed two hundred thirteen thousand two hundred ninety-two point four zero. Second.
Okay, we do have Evalina from the Peoples Express here. If you have any questions or any comments. I know that she gave a very thorough presentation last time, and I don't know if this has been passed on to the board yet, but the county has also let us know that through the senior millage at Peoples Express and JFS, Jewish Family Services, will be providing Pittsfield Township with free rides to seniors sixties and old, sixty and over, older. So that's also a benefit, and then also with, with this service, will be really providing great transportation to our residents, so.
Good.
All right, if there's no questions or discussion, I will go ahead and say all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. May I ask for a motion for nine point five, please?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign a contract change order with Blue Scope Construction for planned changes for the Public Safety Facility Improvement Project at a cost not to exceed sixty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, subject to township attorney approval.
Second.
Okay, and, yes, go ahead.
I, I would just like to ask the director to come up, and only because when we were bringing this packet together, there were questions about the cost, and I just want to make sure that I didn't mess up the agenda.
And I was, I will say that the next, let's see, four items are the director, too, so, you know, while you got them up here.
Don't go anywhere.
I'm ready.
Sorry, sorry, Director Gray.
So I just want to make sure for the, for the Blue Scope Construction, that one was an amount for sixty-four thousand plus.
That is correct. This is, this is a change order to the Phase Two contract. And so it is a, some, some major or minor changes, I guess it depends on if you're a builder, to the plans that amounted to that amount. That, that is the sixty-four, three ninety-five.
And, and, and that's part of that one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars? Is it project? Because this is all part of the Public Safety Facilities Improvement Project?
That's correct. So phase, it's, it's the, it is the first phase, but it, in order to finish, they broke this into two different, two different phases, both in how it was paid for, but also the building itself. So in the new portion of the building, it was a change to the floor plan, to a certain degree that, that needed to be done. And so it's an additional sixty-four.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was correct. I have no other questions.
Okay, any other questions? And, and any of the next ones we're doing, too, we can always, you know, we'll.
I'll stay right here.
Yeah, if you want to stay right there, stay put, thank you.
I'll get back in.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one passes. If I can have a motion for nine point six, please?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to enter into an agreement with Casper Corporation for the installation of police fire gear storage and evidence intake lockers for the Public Safety Facility Improvement Project, with a cost not to exceed one hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents, subject to the township attorney approval.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this one? Do you just want to give us a brief overview of what that is? That would be, since you're here.
If this piece is what you were talking about, the one thirty-seven, this is outfitting the police locker, men and women locker room with lockers, the fire, fire men's and women's locker room at Station One with lockers. Also, gear storage for patrol bags and tech bags in the police equipment room, and then also a pass-through locker system. That's an addition to the pass-through lockers that we currently have. We're going to move those into a new area of the building. We're keeping those, but we're going to expand that by, I think, two lockers included here as well. So it's, it's a lot of lockers. That's what this is for.
How, how long do we think that, I mean, where are we at as far as timeline for this project? Are we, are, are, do we have a move-in date? Do we know?
So it's looking closer to February now. We were thinking late December or mid-January, and it's looking closer to February now, but for this particular item, we're going to have to move the, unfortunately, we'll have to move the old lockers into the new locker room temporarily, because there's a sixteen to eighteen week delay on these lockers, unfortunately. So, but no, we're, we're looking at moving into the new portion of the building in February.
Oh, nice, okay.
And so, yeah, so for those of you that don't know the whole thing, so that they'll be moving into the new portion, and part of the police force will be moving over to Parks and Rec, too. So why are the other, the main part of the building that's currently, will be revamped? And we're kind of misplacing people, and everybody's going to be a little, you know, yeah.
Shuffle to the left.
But it's, 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 it's saving costs, and it's, it really works, everybody's working as a team, so, just to reiterate that. All right, did we do the all in favor? Are, are you just, are we all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. May I have a motion for nine point seven, please?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the purchase of a ready-rack gear lockers from R and R Fire Truck Repair Incorporated with installation by Vanstone O'Brien for the Public Safety Improvement Project, with a cost not to exceed eight thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this one? All right, yep. Good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. May I please have a motion for nine point eight?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to enter into an agreement with the Pittsfield Glen Communities to enforce Michigan Motor Vehicle Code and Uniform Traffic Code on their private roads and parking lots by the Pittsfield Township Police Department, subject to township attorney approval.
Second.
Do you want to give a little background on this one, since?
Sure. There are several neighborhoods that are, that don't have public roads. And all the new neighborhoods, my, to my understanding, none of the new neighborhoods that are being developed right now will have public roads. They'll all be private roads. And so there are limitations to the amount of traffic work that we can do in those zones. And so hypothetically, a resident might move into one of these neighborhoods, and there's an issue with speeding in the neighborhood. They would contact the Department of Public Safety, and we would be very limited in the amount of work that we could do, visibility and enforcement that we could do in their neighborhood. Of course, we can always drive through, but we couldn't make a traffic stop for a speeding violation, or even a stop sign violation on private property, without an agreement like this.
You're good.
That's good.
Director Gray, how many types of agreements do we have like this? Do we, I mean, ballpark?
Currently, this is the third, and the law changed. It used to be that you could just have a letter of understanding with the community, and so we had many of those. And so now we've, you know, pushed information out to the homeowner associations explaining that we can't do those enforcements in their neighborhood anymore, that if they would like to enter an agreement, we would be happy to do that. So I believe we have, this is our third. I expect to see more of these coming.
Any more questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, approved, and you are now off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've pulled nine point nine, so can I get a motion for nine ten?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt a resolution to approve a position elimination with, within the supervisor's office, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? We do have our Director of HR, Pam Hall, here. Does she have any questions?
I, I would just like to state that, like, you know, it is really awful when we have to eliminate a position, and I understand the reasons that we're doing it. Tanya Andrews has been with the township for a very long time, and I do feel like, you know, she's always worked really hard, and so, and I wanted to say that, you know, she has been a good employee, she's a good worker, and we are going to miss her, but we do hope that she, you know, has the best going forward.
Absolutely, absolutely. Nothing to do with her at any, any way she performed. It's more of a position type of thing. Okay, may I ask for a roll call?
Clerk Kenzoldy.
Yes.
Treasurer Epikin.
Yes.
Trustee Erda Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Jafford.
Yes.
Trustee Mills.
Yes.
Supervisor Riley.
Yes.
Madam Supervisor, you have sixty-eight.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. May I ask for a motion for nine point eleven?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt a resolution to reaffirm the Board of Trustees' compliance with the requirements of PA one fifty-two of two thousand eleven, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-nine.
Second.
Okay, I'm just going to ask Director Hall to come up and just give a, we talked about this briefly. This is like the first thing we did when we were officially aboard. I think that was our first meeting, was to talk about the hard cap. So just a quick explanation of what it is, again, would be helpful, just because it.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, last year, Director Denick was kind enough to prepare a whole PowerPoint presentation and deliver it, and we didn't want to inundate you with duplicating that same presentation, so I'll just give you a quick, quick overview here. PA one fifty-two is the Public, Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act of two thousand eleven, and there are three options for the township to comply. The default compliance is to follow the, what's called the hard cap option, and that's where the state treasury sets thresholds for how much a public employer can contribute towards the employee's health insurance. So that is the one that the township has followed since the inception of the law, and we're proposing and recommending that we do again. The other two options, one is you can comply with a alternative method of, it's called the eighty-twenty percent premium share, where the employer would pay eighty percent, and the employees would get the other twenty percent. And then you are permitted to, on an annual basis, opt out entirely, meaning those limits would not apply. But that kind of leads maybe into a Wild Wild West situation, where you don't know from year to year what the parameters are, and would have to be established, probably a lot of back and forth between collective bargaining units and the board to establish, you know, what an opt-out would look like. And there are important reasons not to do that. So as I said, historically, the township board has always gone with the hard cap so far. It does have the least impact to the employees typically, not across the board hundred percent, but in most cases, it is the least impact to the employees. We have two high deductible health plans currently, out of the three plans that we offer, and sixty-five percent of our employees who take health insurance are already in the highest deductible plan. And I, we have created a situation here where there is no employee share with that particular plan, so we don't expect too many employees will be impacted. Yes, there are some in the traditional plan that we'll have to work with to consider their options. We plan to do that with employee meetings and employee communications throughout the next few weeks. Our open enrollment starts on November twentieth. All of our three health plans are the same as two thousand twenty-five. They're all still gold level plans, according to the Affordable Care Act standards. And I think those are, those are the primary highlights. Do you have any questions, concerns?
I know we went over this quite extensively a year ago, but do you have any questions?
I guess my question would be, how many municipalities do you know in Washtenaw County, approximately, if you know? Do they opt out? Or I, I know Washtenaw County as a county, does it? Are there any municipalities out there that you know of?
Relative to Washtenaw County, I don't know, but we do, do, we do comparable community data collection, and I know there are some within Washtenaw, Wayne, and Oakland County that do opt out.
I, that's, I was just curious. I, I mean, I understand it from a perspective of allowing the employees and everyone, for them, to know, you know, how we're going to be paying this, and in this, some efficiency and fairness almost about doing the hard cap, which, which I do like. But as everyone also knows, healthcare costs are completely outrageous, and, you know, if it is a burden on our employees, I can't imagine what it's doing to other people who are, don't have healthcare through their employers or, or on the Obamacare, and I just, I'm super worried about those people now, so.
That's a fair point. The marketplace plans are increasing astronomically as well.
And our, our plans have been on the upward trajectory. And it's, I, I understand why, why it's going in that direction. Healthcare costs are just, like, almost outrageous, and, but we are very fortunate to have healthcare for our employees, and, and yes, so.
Still a very valuable benefit, and following the hard cap provides a, kind of a known legal and accepted framework for determining the share, the premium share.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
All right.
And the next item, I think, is mine, if you'd like me to step.
I will go ahead and ask for a roll call for this one.
Treasurer Epikin.
Yes.
Trustee Erda Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Jafford.
Yes.
Trustee Mills.
Yes.
Supervisor Riley.
Yes.
Clerk Kenzoldy.
Yes.
Madam Supervisor, you have sixty-eight.
All right, resolution has passed. May I have a motion for nine point twelve?
Madam Chair, I, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to enter into an agreement for employer-provided insurance benefit renewals for two thousand twenty-six, and authorize the Director of Human Resources to sign the agreements on behalf of the township, subject to township attorney approval.
Second.
Okay, again, Director Hall is right up here. I don't know if you want to give a quick recap, and.
So this is an annual process. Every year, we have to re-sign those agreements with our insurance carriers. So that is what we've presented here. So there are several different contracts involved, the health insurance, the dental. Health savings accounts are sort of wrapped into the health insurance, flexible spending accounts, and life insurance. Just so the board is aware, we did try to obtain some quotes from other carriers on our health insurance, just to, because of the Blue Cross rates being on such a huge trajectory. And we went to Aetna and Priority Health, and both companies declined to quote us. We do have a bad claims year in our three-year look-back period, and I think for that reason, they didn't see us as a good, good risk. Another company hap is leaving the state of Michigan, so there's, there are just a lot of complex factors going on with health insurance right now.
All right, if there's no questions, I will go ahead and say all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
All right, no unfinished business. I will go on to, oh.
Can we do item nine thirty?
Oh, sorry. Yes, we can do, may I have a motion for nine point thirteen? Thank you for reminding me.
I, I would like to, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign an agreement with DTE Energy Company for the relocation of electric services for pub, for the Public Safety Facility Improvement Project, for a amount not to exceed forty-two thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-six cents, subject to the township attorney approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, and approved. All right, no unfinished business. Now we're asking for liaison and trustee reports.
Okay, I do have a summary of the action which we take in November sixth, two thousand twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission wanted to postpone action on C S, C S P A two-two dash two-three Fieldstone Park. The second was Planning Commission wanted to approve the resolution of denial for R Z two-five zero-three five-eight-zero-one, South State Street rezoning. And that's for the November sixth, and we're, our next meeting will be November twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if you have one as well?
Yeah, I have some to add to that for liaison with the Historical Commission. They, we discussed at the meeting that they're going to be farming back to Southernland Wilson Farm. We're going to have a community garden that will be run by the rec department. And so we know that how we'll present it may not be, you know, time period accurate, but farming coming back to the farm is going to be really important, and we know that it will be a fence up around it. I know the fence, I don't know if the fence will be just seasonal fence that we're going to have around it, or?
I would have to ask.
Do you have to ask? Okay. Because that was one thing that they were.
You happen to know? Camer, Kurt, or Camer, Rich? Okay, sorry. Sorry, yeah, sorry to call you out.
Yeah, because I, I did walk last week over to the community garden in Ann Arbor off of Sile Church, and they took down their fence, and they graded the whole thing. They, they got it all ready for the season for next year, and so I just wanted to inquire if the fence would come down, because they were asking me about that.
Yeah, we can, we can, yeah.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I mean, we've worked out the details still maybe, but yes.
Yeah, you know, that sounds good.
Excited about bringing it back, yeah.
And I, and so it was the, the commission.
Good.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would just like to make a comment, we, we would like to thank the, uh, Celine High School students from Government APE, uh, coming out to our board meetings and observing us. I know you're required to, um, and I hope it wasn't as boring as, uh, you might have expected. And if you have any questions, this lady over here is the supervisor, so she's like the mayor of a very small New York City. So, she's like the mayor, and we're the administrators, and all these people vote on, you know, how the money is spent and what priorities that the township has. So if you want to talk to any of us after the meeting, just come right up. If you want to take pictures behind here or at the podium for your LinkedIn account, hey, all the power to you. But we, we thank you for coming and we want you guys to be involved. So it would be perhaps beneficial for you, um, if you so desire, to contact possibly the supervisor's office, Trish Riley, um, and see if there are anything that you can volunteer with, because, you know, our community is very diverse, and a part of that diversity also includes the young mindset, and, and we would all be interested to know what you guys are learning in there. And so, uh, we welcome you, thank you for coming, and as I said, if you have any questions.
And I would say also that we have a big election coming up next year, and you only have to be sixteen in order to be an election inspector as well, and it's a paid gig.
It's a paid gig.
And it's also a great learning experience.
But it's all day.
And this meeting is, um, being recorded and it's on YouTube, so if you want to re-watch it or, you know, if you need for notes or anything, or for the future, you have that as well.
May I add one thing?
Yep.
Go Hornets.
All right, good job.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, that being said, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment, too. Um, any person may come forward at this time to address the board, anyone wishes to speak, um, is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Ma'am Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, we are adjourned at seven oh two.
Is that pretty close? And is she, did she drag it out?
Oh, is this the same?